This evening, I do want to ask that you please mute your cell phones. We don't want any embarrassing interruptions. We will start out with the invocation of Commissioner Sharp and followed by the pledge of allegiance.
If you could stand and observe a moment of silence. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additional agenda items on the agenda? For the agenda? Just to, for your information under old business, letter A, request for approval to adopt and acquire voting equipment pending, we're not going to visit that tonight, that'll be rescheduled. Any other additional items for the agenda?
If we can add a closed session to discuss the acquisition of real property.
It's on our notes for a closed session.
Yes, sir. I think it did make the original agenda.
Anything else? Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion been made to approve the agenda with the amendments. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? Trust you enjoyed the reading.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is my distinct pleasure to recognize Sanford Police Chief Ronnie Yarborough for 50 years of service. Give me a moment here.
Please. It is my distinct, distinct pleasure and privilege honoring 50 years of service of Sanford Police Chief Ronnie Yarborough. And I do want to say thank you to Commissioner Reeves, also a city resident, for instigating this on your behalf, so, thank you. Whereas Chief Ronnie Yarborough has been employed with the City of Sanford Police Department since 1971, where he began as a uniformed patrolman. And whereas in June 1972, Chief Ronnie Yarborough was promoted to detective and assigned to work in the detective division. And whereas in September 1974, Chief Ronnie Yarborough was promoted to sergeant to head the newly formed narcotics division, working drug investigations. And whereas in August 1975, Chief Ronnie Yarborough advanced to the rank of lieutenant and was appointed to the position of administrative assistant to the chief of police. Whereas in February 1978, Chief Ronnie Yarborough was promoted to the rank of captain and continued his service as administrative assistant in addition to assuming command of the detective and narcotics division. And whereas in 1978, Chief Ronnie Yarborough graduated from and was certified as a firearms training expert by the FBI National Academy, the U.S. Department of Justice in Quantico, Virginia. And whereas in September 1978, Chief Ronnie Yarborough was promoted to serve as the acting chief of police after the retirement of Chief C.L. Cummings. And whereas on November 3rd, 1978, Chief Ronnie Yarborough was officially appointed to the position of chief of police. Whereas the Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor the achievement of 50 years of service as a law enforcement professional serving the Sanford community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that the City of Sanford Police Chief Ronnie Yarborough is hereby commended and honored on behalf of all the citizens of Lee County for his exemplary 50 years of service and contributions to Lee County, presented this 5th day of April 2021. Thank you, sir. And on behalf of the, on behalf of the county, we would like to present you an official county pen. And your, obviously, you want to get this resolution. Thank you, sir. Would you like to say something?
I want to say that, that, that it means a great deal to me, you know. The only thing about the 50 years, it gives away my age. You know, because you all figured out I started when I was 20 and a half. And so, it gives away the oldness in me now, but, you know, I've had a great career with the city. City's been awful good to me. I get questioned quite a lot, when you go retire, when you go retire. So, my answer seems to be that as long as I feel as though I can lead a group of law enforcement people and give back, then I'll continue to do so. But thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you, sir.
Before you take your seat, before you take your seat, I have, my ballgame was interrupted by former chief, I'm sorry, former sheriff Billy Bryan. He wanted me to share these comments for him to you. I served 20 years with the Lee County Sheriff's Department. And as sheriff, every time I needed support from our city police chief Ronnie Yarborough, he never failed to provide the support to our staff, our department. He's a great law enforcement officer and my friend, and thanks for serving Ronnie. That's from the sheriff.
We have no public comments for this evening. Moving on to old business. Updated Project Star agreement in my gizmo went offline here. I gotta go back in. Went to sleep. I believe that's yours?
Yes, sir. And what you all have in your packet in front of you, hot off the press about two hours ago, is the most recent updated Project Star agreement. So I can go over, the company has requested a couple of changes. Most of them were minor changes that we went ahead and made, but we didn't want to bring it back on a couple of the changes. One of those being, they asked if they made more investment, if they would be able to, because this is based off a percentage, if they would be able to receive more than their up to amount. So we went through and made the changes throughout the agreement that we had what the amount would be each year, but more or less depending on the amount of investment they made. And then on page five, we have included for budgetary purposes that January 31st of the calendar year, following the year in which the net taxable investment is made, if they're anticipating it to be larger than what they had on Exhibit A, they will, they will provide us a new Exhibit A so that we can budget accordingly. And the other change that we have negotiated is on page six. Throughout the agreement, on our original public hearing notice, we advertised 315 jobs. We have now upped those jobs at 325, so it's more than what we had originally advertised. And we have allowed that if, for them to be fully compliant for the job creation, is if they haven't, meet 80% of whatever their job requirement is supposed to be. That way if they were to, Lisa has gone over multiple times how the incentive would work depending on different scenarios. And so if they meet one or not the other, how she would prorate it. And then, so, so we've done that. We have gone through and made the change to facilitate 325 jobs since we're going to give them the 80% job meeting there. And I just got an email actually not long ago, the Exhibit A has changed based off of their new numbers, so the anticipated or anticipated amount is actually a little bit less, 5,900,000, that the county would pay would be 5,978,838, which may be more or less depending on what their actual investments are each year. And then Exhibit B that is in there, if the board is fine, if the board goes ahead and approves this and gives me the authorization, they're requesting that the number of jobs be cumulative on that as opposed to how it's listed, so I can make that change after this evening, assuming that the board approves it.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions from the commission? Commissioner? Commissioner Lovick, do you have any questions on the proposal?
No, sir, I'm good.
Commissioner Reeves, any questions on the proposal?
None at all.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner? Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver? No questions? No questions for Attorney Jimmy Randolph? Lisa? Okay?
And the same is if the board, if they approve, then we'll, when the company announces, we'll go ahead and make that change in the agreement and then have the chair sign.
Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Motion has been made to approve the updated Project Star agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Under new business? Give me a second. Yes, I'm not here. Under new business, considered proposed layout for Ashby Commons in relation to the proposed sports complex site concept. The developers will be seeking support from the City of Sanford and Lee County government in development of a road that will use property to the west of the sports complex site, which is Davenport property, to access Broadway Road.
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll take care of that.
Okay.
Mr. Luskowski and Mr. Covington came by my office a little while ago and apologized for having a conflict tonight. They have a public hearing down in Rayford for another project. Obviously, they're very busy with, with their projects. But in this particular discussion, we've actually met with the city and, you know, the development group and talked about, if you looked at your agenda packet, it's item 11 on the map, and that is the road that comes off of Broadway Road and goes to a traffic circle just to the west of the complex. So that road is, would be on property entirely owned by the Davennports. So the developer and the city are seeking county assistance, and at this time, we don't have any estimates of what that assistance would be. I did ask, hopefully in two weeks, when they would like to come back and discuss their project further, and also two other projects that they're working on, that one will impact the Wilson Roadman Convenience Center. So, so right now, it's really information only, be able to, you know, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about, about it. But these two developers seem to be very busy.
Any questions for the manager?
Is it, is it understood that the road will be paid for like a third, a third, a third, or?
No, actually, I'm trying to go less than that.
Okay, I'm just, just curious.
Because the city is, is seeing a road, a parkway type road there, where that would be four-laned with a median. And the developers believe that really only a two-lane road is required there, and they're not really interested in the median and spending all that money, but the city might. And so, you know, our interest is just having the access and, you know, if they're building something big and fancy, you know, I don't, I don't think we really need to be involved with that, just whatever it would take for us to have access and have a normal two-lane road to go out to the, out to the intersection is what I told them, I thought we would be interested in investing in. So whatever one-third of that minimum standard road would be.
Any other questions of the manager?
Is it going to be a traffic circle like Hawkins Avenue?
It looks a little smaller than that, but they really put that in there to control the speed of traffic going by the, by the park, which was a concern that I had when they first proposed it. Obviously, they first posed it going through the middle of the park, and I told them, you know, we wouldn't accept that. So they've come up with this, this idea, and it actually, you can see right next to the road, there's a future commercial industrial site, and that's owned by Mr. Davenport. And they're very interested in, in actually trying to, you know, develop more of that property and think they can do that with that road.
I have a question. What is the status of our preparation for getting on the property to do an analysis?
Well, we've got the second option back today, so I now have both options, and so now I, we can get on the property and take a look. And Santiago and I are, are meeting to figure out who we're going to hire to do that. I wanted to make sure I had the options first before I hired anybody.
Correct, understand.
So, we have to go through RFQ process to, to get, you know, an engineer to help us go out there on the site, so we're getting ready to start that.
Now for those residents that have just recently moved to Lee County, we do not build roads. Counties up north do that. Thank God. Any further discussion?
Is this going to have any impact on Shallowell Church there?
Well, we, we talked about that today in our, in the meeting, and wanted to make it, you know, pretty clear that, you know, they contact the church and talk about it, and actually they have, and you can see on the map, just to the north, there's a little dirt road right there. And the church actually had talked about being able to connect to the parkway there. And so it seems to be that they would have enough footage away from the road to be able to do that, but that'd be something that the city in DOT would have to agree to. So I think the church is okay with that, and it's, and the, the road is entirely on Mr. Davenport's property.
Gotcha. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Okay, just, this was open for discussion. If there's no other discussions, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Debt presentation by Davenport Public Finance. And Lisa?
I'm going to do the introduction. Good evening. Tonight, we have a presentation from Mitch Beguglio with Davenport Public Finance to discuss the potential financing of several projects that you have on the table, one being the multi-sports complex that the referendum was approved back in November. Plus, we're also looking at limited obligation bonds to fund a new Lee County library and projects for community college. So once Mitch finishes his presentation, I'll come back up and we'll have a discussion, hopefully to possibly set a timeline for the projects after you hear his presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Mitch Beguglio from Davenport and Company. We serve as the county's financial advisor. We've served in that role since 2003 and have helped you all through a number of different capital planning and financing efforts. And tonight, wanted to provide maybe a little bit of background for those of you all who are not familiar with some of our prior work, and then give you a good overview of where the county stands today related to its credit profile and its existing debt profile. And then, as Ms. Mentor said, start to think about the projects that you all are considering and look at the potential impacts of that project on the county's credit and your debt capacity and your debt affordability. You all have hard copies of the presentation at your, at your seats. Some of the numbers, I apologize, do get a little bit small, so it might be easier to look at in your book, and it is up on the screen as well. I'll try and keep it, keep the screen on the right page, so we are all talking about the same thing. There's page numbers in the lower right-hand corner that I'll, I'll reference along the way as well. So did want to start out, and I'm going to kind of flip forward on you to page four, and a little bit about our role as a financial advisor, and what does a financial advisor do in, in this sense for, for the county. We are a fiduciary to the county, which means we have a fiduciary duty to you all to put your interests ahead of our own. We sit on the same side of the table as you all for a debt transaction and help you through the process. As part of that, we, we like to say we're a full-service advisor. We, we don't just come in and help with transactions. We help you at the planning stage of the transactions, think through the potential impacts and the cash flows associated with a project before a debt financing is even started. So, and that's what we're going to be talking about this evening. And then when it comes to the transaction side of things, we help you all through the credit rating process and, and setting up a credit rating strategy to talk to the credit rating agencies. And then we work with you throughout the process of issuing the debt and closing the debt instrument, whether it be the general obligation bonds or limited obligation bonds. So in our role, I think this is the important part, in our role as a financial advisor, we sit on the same side of the table as the county, and we help you all structure a financing in your best interest. And we've been, as I mentioned earlier, we've been in that role with the county on page five, to get a little bit of background. We've been in this role with the county since 2003, encompassing over nine transactions, two general obligation bond referendums, and a number of different planning projects along the way. So don't want to spend a lot of time talking about ourselves. There is some background, additional background on our firm in the appendix on page 40, but just for some of you all who we haven't had an opportunity to speak with yet, we did want to give a little bit of background on our prior work with the county. So getting into the county specifically, wanted to start with a credit rating overview. So as an issuer of municipal bonds, municipal debt, the county does have a credit rating from the national credit rating agencies, Moody's and Standard and Poor's. And you can see on the right side of the page, the county has a AA2 rating from Moody's Investor Service. That's two steps away from the highest possible rating of AAA. And likewise, with Standard and Poor's, you have a AA credit rating, which is again, two steps away from that highest rating of AAA. For a little bit of perspective, we're going to go through some peer comparatives throughout this presentation. And those peers that we've established are going to be based upon credit ratings. And we'll look at nationally rated counties, and these are in Moody's rating categories, that are rated AA1, which is one rating step higher than you all. There's 123 counties rated nationally AA1, just one step ahead of you all. We'll look at nationally rated counties that have a AA2 credit rating. There's 258 counties that are rated AA2, one of which is Lee County. And then the step right below you all at AA3, there's 174 counties nationally that are rated AA3. We'll look at those same three categories, AA1, AA2, and AA3 for North Carolina rated counties. And I think it's in the bottom left corner, I always find it interesting to see what specific counties are rated in there. You can see there's 13 AA1 counties in North Carolina. There's 22 AA2, so that's the category that you all fall in, and you can see the other counties listed out that are in that AA2 category. And then 11 credits, 11 counties are AA3, just lower than you all. So again, throughout this presentation, we're going to give you a little bit of perspective on how you all stack up to these rating peers, and we're going to pull our data directly from Moody's Investor Service. So it's going to come directly from the rating agencies, the exact data that they're looking at. Okay? We do have the county's last detailed rating reports in the appendix for you, and there's a summary of those, the most recent report on page eight from Moody's Investor Service. And on page nine is the, a summary of the most recent rating report from Standard and Poor's. And I think what's interesting, if we talk off of page nine on Standard and Poor's, they do a nice job of saying, what is the potential upside to see your rating increase versus what is the potential downside or a risk of seeing a lower credit rating? And for, for S&amp;P, what they've said is that really it comes down to economic factors. If your economic factors increase, they could see some upside potential in the credit rating going up. And then on the downside risk, what they've said is that if your reserves were to deteriorate to a, to significantly, to a level that's not commensurate at the AA2 level, that's the potential risk they could see of a downside scenario. So really, with S&amp;P, the upside is the economic factors changing, and I know that's something that you all have been focused on and have had a lot of success here recently. Okay? And then, as we get into the capital planning process, we're going to be thinking a lot about these credit ratings. Credit ratings are a very important factor in issuing municipal bonds, and they probably more than anything else will be the biggest driver of the interest rate that you receive on your bonds. The lower interest rate you have on your bonds, the lower annual payments you have, the more capacity you have to do other projects or free up cash flow for other purposes. Likewise, if you have a lower credit rating, your interest rate goes up, the project costs you more to finance. So this is something that's a very important part of the issuance process, and we want to focus on it on the front end through the planning process to try and maximize that outcome, maximize the credit rating. And you all are starting out from a very good position of strength at a AA2, AA. We want to try and keep it there and look to improve it where possible. Okay? For a little bit of perspective, and I won't go into too much detail unless you all want, want to get into the weeds, but I do, do think it's helpful to understand how the rating agencies look at credit ratings. And page 10 is Moody's and page 11 is Standard and Poor's. I'm going to talk off of page 10, which is Moody's Investor Service methodology. They're very similar to Standard and Poor's. They look at very similar things. Moody's is a little simpler to talk through. But if you look at the left-hand side of the page, Moody's will go through a very detailed qualitative analysis of specific ratios when establishing an indicative credit rating for the county. And so there's four key elements. Economy and tax base, which makes up 30% of the overall rating. Finances, as in reserves and are you adding to fund balance or are you drawing down from fund balance, makes up another 30% of the overall rating. Management is 20%, so things like how do you budget? Are you budgeting at an obtainable level? Are you budgeting at a reasonable level? Do you have financial policies? Do you have planning processes in place, all of which you all have and do well? Management is 20% of the overall rating. And then the final factor, debt and pensions, is another 20% of the overall rating. So for Moody's and their qualitative approach, 30% of the rating is economy and tax base. That is not something that you all necessarily have direct control of. There's no one item that you all can adopt as part of your budget, no one policy that you can put in place this budget year to affect that economy score. That's, you've got some longer-term control there, longer-term policies, longer-term initiatives can help, but no one item that you can adopt and impact that score. The other 70% of the rating, finances, management, and debt, you all do have direct control over, and you all can make decisions to, to maintain the levels that you're at today. And so as we think about things, we think it's important to focus on that 70% that you all have direct control over. And you all have done a nice job of that over the years, and that's why you're at the AA2 level at this point, to get to those next steps. Like S&amp;P said, it's more on the economy side, which is, is a work in progress, and obviously you all have had a lot of nice announcements recently to that effect. Okay? So, and please stop me along the way if you all have questions. I'm happy to answer questions as we go. But I do want to transition into your existing tax-supported debt profile. As we think about- The other 70% of the rating, finances, management, and debt, you all do have direct control over. And you all can make decisions to maintain the levels that you're at today. And so as we think about things, we think it's important to focus on that 70% that you all have direct control over. And you all have done a nice job of that over the years. And that's why you're at the double A two level at this point. To get to those next steps, like S and P said, it's more on the economy side, which is a work in progress. And obviously you all have had a lot of nice announcements recently to that effect. Okay? So, and please stop me along the way if you all have questions. I'm happy to answer questions as we go. But I do want to transition into your existing tax-supported debt profile. As we think about bringing on new projects and funding new capital projects through a debt issuance, we want to understand your existing debt profile today. How do you stack up against your debt financial policies? How are you paying for your existing debt? And then when we bring on that new debt, how does it impact your debt policies? How does it impact your debt cash flow? In order to do that, we have to understand where you stand today and have a good knowledge of your existing debt. And so that's what you see on page 13 is a starting look at that. The county has about 87.18 million of debt outstanding as of June 30 of 2020. Just under 20 million of that is the general obligation bonds. And then another 67 million is what we call installment purchase contracts or limited obligation bonds. The 87.1 million of total debt is outstanding through fiscal year 2038. So there's about 17 to 18 years left to repay all of that debt. And on the 87.1 million, there will be an additional $21 million of interest paid over that 18 years for a total payback of just under $109 million. In the far right-hand side of the page, we're going to introduce the first key debt ratio. And you all have a financial policy for this debt ratio. It's called the 10-year payout ratio. And what this is, it's a measure of how much of your debt outstanding are you repaying over the first 10 years? So principal amount outstanding is 87.1 million. Over the first 10 years, you all are repaying just over $65 million of that 87 million that's outstanding. So over the first 10 years, you're repaying 75% of your outstanding debt. It's a very good payout ratio. You're, when you issue your debt, you're paying it back in a responsible fashion. You're not deferring the repayment of that debt. You're, you're starting to pay it back in a very quick and responsible fashion. And there's a little more detail on this ratio on page 14. You can see it graphically. And the county has a policy on this 10-year payout ratio that it will be a minimum 10-year payout ratio of at least 50%. So over the first 10 years, you have to repay at least 50% of your debt outstanding. And you all, again, well above that at over the 75% mark. Little, little more perspective on that, on the right-hand side of the page is this first peer comparative. Let me walk you through this. We're going to look at a couple of these, so I want to make sure you all understand how this is set up. So if you're looking at the peer comparative on the right-hand side of the page, the gold bar is Lee County. And y'all are at the roughly 75% payout ratio. The light green bars are the nationally rated counties. And again, we're looking at the national double A ones, which is one credit rating higher than you all. National double A twos, which is y'all's credit rating. And then national double A threes, which is one level lower than you all are. And then same setup in the dark green, but for the North Carolina-specific counties. And what you, what you see on this payout ratio, or on this peer comparative for the payout ratio is at 75%, you all are basically right in line with the national in North Carolina, double A one and double A two medians. So you have a good payout ratio, 75%. It's well in compliance with your policy and you stack up nicely to these peers. On these peers, remember, we're looking at the median. So half of the values are higher, half of the values are lower. There's 22 other counties that are rated double A two. So when you look at the median, 11 are higher, 11 are lower than the median that we're showing. And again, you all stack up nicely on that median. Okay? The next key ratio that we're going to look at is debt to assessed value on page 15. This is a measure of your total debt outstanding, total principal amount outstanding, so that $87 million divided by your overall tax base. This is a common measure of debt burden. And for you all at the 87 million versus roughly a $5.9 billion assessed value, you're just under 1.5% debt to assessed value on page 15. The county does have a policy for debt to assessed value. It's a maximum of 2% or a not to exceed 2%. So again, at 1.5%, y'all are below your policy in good shape there. On the right-hand side of the page is the peer comparative. And again, Lee County's in the gold bar. And you see a little bit higher than, than these other medians. And so want to dig into that a little bit. I think it's important to note, the national medians on the, on these debt to assessed value in the next ratio we'll look at, you lose a little bit of comparability nationally. So places like South Carolina, Pennsylvania, a number of other states have independent school districts. Those school districts issue debt to fund school capital projects. The counties do not issue the debt. School districts have their own tax base. They have their own debt issuance authority. They issue the debt, so that debt doesn't show up on the county books in a state like South Carolina, unlike North Carolina, where you all fund the capital projects for the schools. So the debt is on the county books for any school-funded projects. So that's why I think it's more, more relevant to look at the dark green bars for this ratio, North Carolina-specific ratios. And again, you see the, the North Carolina double A two median is right at about 1%. So y'all are a little bit higher than your current double A two median, your current peers in North Carolina. But if you look within that bar, we've shown you the range. You know, the double A two ranges from 0.3% is the minimum debt to assessed value, all the way up to the maximum of 2.3%. You all are at 1.5%. So you're not an outlier there. You're a little bit higher than the median, but you're not on the high end. You're not an outlier within this overall range of your peers. Moody's looks at this criteria specifically, debt to assessed value. And what they say is anything in the 0.75% to 1.75% range is in their strong category. That's their second-best category. That's where you all fall out today at the 1.5%. You're in their second-highest category under this ratio. Okay? And then last one, last key debt ratio, and last one you all have a policy for, is on page 16, debt service versus expenditures. This is your annual debt service divided by your overall governmental operating fund budget. And this, this is a measure, this is a twofold measure. Number one, it's a measure of your debt burden. But number two, it's a measure of your budgetary flexibility. So a debt service payment, particularly in North Carolina, once you issue the debt, you're going to repay the debt. It's not something that you can change. It's a fixed amount at a fixed interest rate. You know what your debt service payment is going to be for the next 18 years. We can tell you exactly how much you're going to pay. It's not something that you have the ability to change easily. You can't furlough the debt service payment or turn the lights off early on a debt service payment. You've got to pay it once you issue the debt. And so it's an element of budgetary flexibility as well. You all in fiscal year 21 are right at 14.4% debt service as a percentage of your overall governmental operating budget. And you have a policy of not to exceed 15%. So a little bit closer to your policy that, on this one, than you were compared to the other two. But in a very same story is debt to assessed value on the peer comparative on the right-hand side of the page. Again, nationally, you lose a little bit of comparability. But in North Carolina, slightly above the medians, but certainly not the outlier. You're not on the highest end of that range of double A two counties. S and P has a specific calculation for this metric. And they say anything in the 8% to 15% is in their second-highest category of strong. So I think for us, when we take all this information together, we look at all of your debt ratios and all of your debt outstanding. You're in compliance with your policies. You're not an outlier compared to your peers. You're in the strong category of the rating agency analysis. We would say, based upon these debt ratios, you have debt capacity. It's reasonable for you all to consider debt as a funding tool for capital projects, given these ratios compared to your policies. The other side of the question is affordability. Do you have the cash flows available to pay that debt? You may have the capacity, somebody may be willing to lend you that money, but do I have the annual budget to be able to pay for it? And that's what we're going to look at here on the next page. And this is where the numbers get a little small, and I apologize. But this is going to be, this is going to be a good base for our analysis going forward. So I'll, I'll walk you through what's on here, what's on the page. And then maybe with a magnifying glass, you might be able to see it a little bit better. But I'm going to walk you through this left to right, and I'll explain what's involved in this analysis. So it's all done by fiscal year in column A. Column B is the existing debt service. We're starting in fiscal year 22. So the budget that you all are working in now, you have a debt service payment of just over $11 million. And it's declining over time. That's your existing debt that's included in column B. Column C is a placeholder for your proposed debt service. So when we look at funding the library, community college, multi-sports complex projects, we're going to layer in some assumed debt service associated with those projects in column B. Columns D and E are a placeholder. D is a placeholder for CIP pay-as-you-go cash. So if you wanted to take some of these revenues that we're going to get ready to talk through and use them for pay-as-you-go capital, we could layer that in in column D. And likewise, column E is the CIP operating impact. We are not, we're not going to drop anything into that column at this point. But I do think it's important to have in here and be thinking about. We're focused on the capital budget side of things. How do we fund the projects? And if it involves debt issuance, what is the annual debt service associated? Annual principal and interest associated with that financing? That's on the capital budgeting side. There's a whole nother operating budget side as well. So if you fund a new project, you fund a multi-sports complex, do operating costs come with that? And is there an impact on the operating side as well? We don't want to lose sight of that, but we are, in our analysis, focused on the capital budgeting side of things. So we total all that up in column F. Right now, it's just your existing debt service. Then columns G through M, we're focusing on the existing revenues you all have in your existing budget to pay for debt service. So column G is 7.61 pennies, 7.61 cents that have been dedicated towards debt service. And that is based, that 7.61 cents results in about $4.6 million of revenue in fiscal year 22. That's based upon the assumed value of a penny at $586,000 in 2021, grown at 3%. And we're going to assume in this column, a 3% growth rate every year going forward. So we're assuming that your assessed value base, your value of a penny continues to grow at 3% a year going forward. Column H is a placeholder for, for a potential repurposed penny in FY 2022. We'll talk about that as we get into funding some of the other capital projects. Column I, and columns I and J are sales tax revenue. Column I is the restricted sales tax, sales tax restricted for school capital. That's article, it's a percentage of article 40 and article 42. And in FY 22, we're projecting that to be $3.6 million for budget purposes. We're going to assume that that sales tax grows at 4% for the next five years. So 22 through 26, we've got a 4% assumed growth rate. After that, we're going to back the growth rate down to 2% in the end. We know you all have had very strong growth in sales tax in recent years. So we don't want to be too conservative. And that's why we're using the 4% for the next five years. Going forward, we do want to haircut it a little bit because it is an economically sensitive revenue. Not sure what things are going to look like into the future. So we want to be a little bit more conservative in terms of a longer-term projection for those revenues. And then column J is the quarter cent sales tax. That is the article 46 sales tax. Again, that is assumed to grow at 4% for the next five years and then 2% every year thereafter. Column K is the capital reserve fund. This is part of the planning process that the county established as part of the last referendum, or the first referendum was setting aside capital reserve dollars and having those available for future debt payments. That in fiscal 22 budget is preliminary estimated to be 726,000. And we're going to grow that at 1% a year going forward. And then column L is some federal subsidy payments tied to some specific debt issuance that you all have done. There's a couple of specific debt issuances that you all did that receive a subsidy from the federal government. The federal government pays for a portion of the interest on those bonds. Those bonds pay off in fiscal year 2025. That's why that column L goes away after fiscal year 2025. So column M totals all of those revenues up. At G through L are all totaled in column M. And then column N is in Nancy, compares the total revenues in column M versus the total expenses in column F. And what you see is every year going forward, there's projected to be a surplus in column N. Your revenues are higher than your expenditures. So you have affordability to pay for future debt service under the existing revenue budget, under the existing revenues that are already paying for debt service. You have some affordability to pay for future debt.
Question?
Yes, sir.
In column G where you say dedicated, what constitutes the dedicated? Who does?
The board, you all have chosen.
Have done that in the past?
The board has chosen to.
So that's one of our policies, so to speak.
I'm not sure if it's an official policy. I think it's a budgetary item.
Yeah, it's a budgetary item that we've just carried forward.
I got you. Thank you.
So one other item here, over all the way in column S, is a, is a capital reserve or a debt service fund balance. For right now, you, right now, you all have about $2.5 million in reserves set aside from these revenues. And for now, under your existing debt, we're just adding to that reserve. But we're going to start using these dollars as we layer in the new projects. These are the dollars that are going to be available to pay for debt service on the new projects. Okay? So this is, this is an important part of the analysis. This is really the, this is the cash flow side of things. So we talked about that you have debt capacity under your ratios to consider new debt. This is the debt affordability side of things. You have, you have affordability to consider new debt. Now we're going to look at the two of those and layering in the future projects to quantify this. So quick overview of some of our assumptions on page 19. We're going to be looking at funding three projects. Spring of 2022 through a limited obligation. And a limited obligation bond is a common debt instrument used in North Carolina. It's where you basically put a mortgage on an asset. And so in this case, in spring of 22, we're assuming you all would issue a limited obligation bond to fund the county library and the community college, library, early college classroom project. Spring of 22, $14 million estimate for the county library, $12 million estimate for the community college project. That's the first series of projects that we're assuming are issued, debt-funded through a limited obligation bond. And then the second project is the multi-sports complex. You all have authorized $25 million of general obligation bonds for Parks and Recreation. And we're assuming those are used to fund the multi-sports complex. In our base scenario, we're going to assume the spring of 2024 for that issuance. So two years following the, the library and the community. We're also going to look at some alternate scenarios where we accelerate the multi-sports complex, $15 million, the first $15 million of the multi-sports complex. We're going to accelerate that to fiscal year 2023, or the spring of 2023. we're gonna accelerate that to fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, or the spring of twenty-twenty-three. And then we'll look at accelerating the first fifteen million dollars of the multi-sports complex to spring of twenty-twenty-two, be issued at the same time as the community college and the early college library. Oh, excuse me, the community college and the county library. And when we get into case three, we're gonna look at two different scenarios. One in which we're, we're doing everything under the current dedicated resources that we just talked through. And then we'll also look at if we repurpose a penny within the existing budget, and we can add another penny towards going to debt service. How does that impact the project and potentially help you accelerate some of the multi-sports complex? And we've got a summary of everything for you on page twenty. What I'll tell you is we have all of the details for each of these cases in the back of, in the back of this presentation, right behind the summary. I'm happy to go through all the details for you. But I'll start by walking you through the summary, and if we'd like to flip back and look at some of the details, I'm happy to do that. But let me walk you through the summary, orient you to it, um, and then we can, we can again get into some of the details. So lines one through six are a summary of our debt issuance assumptions. In all of these scenarios, we're gonna be looking at a twenty-year term and a five percent interest rate. Five percent is certainly a conservative interest rate, given where we're at today in the market. Um, we, we do have some time before the issuances to occur. The first issuance is until spring of twenty-twenty-two. So there is some room, um, for interest rates to change, and they're constantly changing every day. But we do have cushion in that five percent interest rate for that reason, provide some conservatism into the forecast. Um, lines nine through twelve show you the fiscal year in which we're funding these projects. So column D in case one, again, we're funding the county library and the community college library in fiscal year twenty-two. And then what we've called phase one and phase two of the multi-sports complex in fiscal year twenty-four. So the entire multi-sports complex is funded in fiscal year twenty-four in case one. If you're looking at lines nine through twelve, if you go over a column to column E, case two, the only timing that's changed is line eleven. The first phase of that multi-sports complex is assumed to be issued in fiscal year twenty-three. And then likewise, under columns F and G, case three A and three B, that line eleven, phase one of the multi-sports complex is accelerated into fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Lines fourteen through eighteen just show you the dollar amounts of debt that are issued by fiscal year. In total, it's fifty-one million dollars of, of debt that we're assuming is issued to fund all of these projects. And based upon the five percent interest rate and the twenty-year payback, um, that would result in total debt service or total principal and interest payments of seventy-seven point seven million dollars. Lines twenty-two through twenty-seven revisit your debt policy. So this debt capacity conversation and your key debt ratios compared to your policies. In all of these scenarios, your ten-year payout ratio stays just above sixty percent. So you have a policy not to go below fifty percent. In all of these scenarios, you stay slightly above sixty percent. So you're in good shape on that ten-year payout ratio. Debt to assessed value, remember you have a policy of a max of two percent. Um, in cases one and two, you stay below that two percent mark. In case three, where we accelerate phase one of the multi-sports complex to fiscal year twenty-two, there is one year where you would be right at your two percent level. So when you, in fiscal year twenty-two, if you were to issue phase one of the multi-sports complex, you would hit right at the two percent mark. You know, if your assessed value grows more quickly than the three percent that we've assumed, you would be below the two percent. And then lastly, on line twenty-six is your debt service to expenditures. In this policy, um, you have a maximum of fifteen percent. In all of these scenarios, um, based upon our assumptions for, for the five percent interest rate, twenty-year term, and, and growth in the expenditure budget at three percent, we're assuming that there would be three years where you would be out of compliance with this policy. And it would be fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, where you would be a little bit above this policy. How far above the policy varies upon the case and when you issue the debt. Um, but under case three A and three B, where the debt is issued the fastest, it would be around seventeen and a half percent as the maximum debt service to expenditures compared to your fifteen percent policy. This is not, what I can tell you is this is not something that's unique to you all, having a couple of years out of compliance with debt service to expenditures. Um, what we, we've seen this a lot recently with our clients, um, and I think part of what's going on is just coming out of the Great Recession, folks held budgets low. Um, COVID, folks held the line on budgets. And so we've seen, you know, operating budgets and governmental budgets kinda stay, stay at a relatively low level. Um, but folks are still investing in infrastructure. Um, and particularly right now, a lot of folks are investing in infrastructure, which means this ratio gets a little more pressure. We've had a lot of conversations with the rating agencies, with clients who have been out of compliance with debt service to expenditures policy, um, for a period of time. And it's actually ended up being a very positive conversation when we can go to them and say, we're projecting to be out of compliance with the policy. The board is aware of it, and they've made an exception to the policy and have directed staff to keep an eye on it and try to get back into compliance as quickly as possible. Uh, that's what the rating agencies wanna see. They wanna see that you all are well-informed and that you're ma- you're able to make decisions about your, uh, decisions, understanding how it may impact your policy, and be able to factor that into your decision-making process. So, um, it's actually been a very good conversation, and I think it's actually been a positive conversation with the rating agencies for clients who are able to say, we're projecting to be out of compliance for a year or two, but we've gone through the planning process. Our board is aware, they've acknowledged it and made an exception. Um, it can actually turn around and be a positive conversation.
But just to, just to make a point, we, we were over the fifteen percent, um, projected on the Wicker School, and I believe we projected two years, and actually, we're only over one year.
And that's, again, we have a lot of conservative assumptions in our model, five percent interest rate. Um, if your budget grows more quickly, if we do better on the debt service side of things, um, you may not be out of compliance for three years. You may not be out of compliance at all. Okay? Um, and then finally, um, lines twenty-nine through thirty-six are revisiting that debt affordability. So under case one, you see there's no, what we're calling an incremental equivalent tax impact, um, on line thirty-four, and no equivalent reserves required. Case one, your existing cash flow, the existing resources that you have dedicated to debt service will cover the projected debt service under this issuance schedule. The libraries in fiscal twenty-two, multi, entire multi-sports complex in fiscal year twenty-four fits within your projected cash flows. If you wanna see the details on it, that's back on page twenty-four, if you wanna put that down for your notes. Case two, where we accelerate the multi-sports complex into fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, you're a little bit short. Um, and it's really for a year, maybe two, um, where you would be slightly short and need to come up with additional resources. And the dollars that you would be short, and this, this case is on page twenty-eight, if you wanna look at that. The dollars that you would be short in this scenario are about one point two million dollars. So that's in total. Um, and that happens in, by fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, you would need to come up with about one point two million dollars of additional resources, whether that's through reserves or other revenue sources. Um, you'd need to come up with about one point two million dollars. Case three A is where we do not have any additional resources dedicated to debt service. Um, you would be short in this scenario, um, starting in fiscal year twenty-four. You would be short in fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. This would be a total shortfall of about two point six million dollars. So that's, those are additional dollars that you would need to come up with. And the details of this are on page thirty-two.
Is that each year or total?
In total, two point six million dollars in total. So if we, if you were to flip forward, this will be a good scenario to look at. If you were to flip forward to page thirty-two. So if you were to flip forward to page thirty-two, and I've got it up on the screen, not that anybody can read that. Uh, if you flip forward to page thirty-two, what you see is that online, if, if you look in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, your total expenses in that year are projected to be fourteen point three million dollars, whereas the revenues are total of twelve point five million dollars. So that's a deficit of about one point seven million dollars. We have a little bit of capital reserve, seven hundred and thirty thousand we can use. That takes our deficit in column Q to just over a million dollars. That million dollars equates to about one point eight pennies on the tax rate, but that's a one-time million dollars that you'd have to come up with. Then the following year, in fiscal year twenty-five, over in column N, you'd have to come up with about one point five nine million dollars. See that negative? So it's fiscal year twenty-four, you gotta come up with about a million dollars. Fiscal year twenty-five, you'd have to come up with about one point five nine million dollars. And then after that, if you look in column N, starting in twenty-twenty-six, you're back to a surplus scenario. So it's that two-year period of time, fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, where you would have the shortfall totaling two point six million dollars. If you all were to consider looking at repurposing a penny in fiscal year twenty-two, if you flip forward one page to fiscal year thirty-three, I mean, excuse me, to page thirty-three, the only difference between page thirty-two and thirty-three is column H. And what we've done here is we, we've looked at potentially repurposing a penny in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. So one penny is added to these cash flows in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Not suggesting that's a new penny, just working within your existing budget, dedicating the equivalent of another penny. Um, if you were to do that, your shortfall goes from two point six million dollars in twenty-four and twenty-five to a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-five. So essentially, you're able to cash flow. Um, so that, that's a potential consideration for you all. Um, as, as you're thinking through these scenarios, um, you, I'm gonna go back to the summary page here. As you're thinking through these scenarios, you can cash flow case one without the need for any additional resources. So twenty-twenty-two, you can fund the libraries. Twenty-four, you can fund the multi-sports complex. Don't need any additional resources. You had a little blip on debt service to expenditures of about three years out of compliance, but certainly there's some upside to shorten that. Case two, if you accelerate the multi-sports complex, the first fifteen million dollars to fiscal year twenty-three, same little blip on debt service to expenditures, but you're short by about one point two million dollars on the affordability side. And then if you accelerate the multi-sports complex to fit first fifteen million to fiscal twenty-two, you're short by about two point six million. Unless you were to repurpose a penny, then that essentially takes care of that cash flow issue. Um, you would be short about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. I know I've hit y'all with a lot of information this evening, so I'm, I'm happy to answer questions, dig into any of the details that you all want. There's a lot of information in this presentation, but, um, I'm happy to be available and follow up.
Mitch, I wanna just say thank you, very informative. I love the fact that I can take my screen and expand all these narrowed columns.
And you have to to be able to see it.
Yes.
And so, so, any questions for Mitch at this point?
I'd like to ask a question. Um, one of the uncertainties in my mind has to do with the new administration and the fact we really don't have a good feel for what's gonna happen to the economy over the next four years. When I look at this process, where do I see the caution in that? Would it be in terms of the way we've predicted improvements? These, the five percent, the three percent, the two percent? Is that where you would find those, uh, if you adjusted those somehow, that would a- account for the uncertainties or something? Or is that, is that part of your analysis?
Yes, sir, I think, I think that's fair. I mean, we, we, um, a lot of assumptions go into this analysis, um, as you can imagine. Uh, the interest rate is certainly one element. The five percent interest rate that we've assumed, that's gonna be market-dependent, a lot of times driven by the economy. Um, you know, in the municipal market, bad news is often good news for us in terms of interest rates. But, you know, flip side is if the economy does really well, then interest rates could be going up. So that's one element, we try to be conservative on the five percent. Um, other economically sensitive revenue sources like sales tax, um, i- is a place where we try to be conservative, although we don't wanna be so conservative that we, that we're unreasonably conservative and we, we don't allow you all to make decisions based upon good data. So that's where we had a lot of conversations with Ms. Mentor and Mr. Crumpton about what's the right level to assume for sales tax revenue growth. Um, and that's where we settled on the four percent for the next five years. That's slightly below the average over the last five years. Um, but it does allow to see some of that growth, capture some of the growth you've been seeing without maybe being overly conservative, and then long-term, dropping it down to two percent. Um, trying, trying to capture a little more conservative on the, a little more of a conservative assumption out in the out years. But I think those are, those are two key elements that are affected by the economy um, that will go into this analysis.
And your analysis would say that maybe we've been let, we've been more conservative because we're anticipating the changes we might see over the next four years when you were working on this project?
Yeah, cer- certainly the five percent is conservative. I mean, if we were, if we were out in the market today, if you were to issue bonds today, you would be in the low two percent.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's huge then.
Yeah, so, so the five percent is certainly a conservative assumption. But again, we've got issuances fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. A lot can change in that time period. Um, so that's, that's a big element of conservatism in the analysis.
I, I know I'm talking about a subjective metric here, but the people that you deal with on a regular basis, um, are there some concerns or discussions associated with this kind of uncertainty because of the change in administration? Or is that something that's being mentioned to you?
Well, I mean, I think right now, um, right now, one of the big discussion points is, is the new stimulus and, and how we're gonna be able to spend that, and what are the rules? I mean, that's obviously, um, a big number for a lot of folks and, and not a lot of guidance at this point on how it can be spent. Um, that's where a lot of the, the conversation in the near term lies. Longer term, I think, yeah, a lot of conversations around sales tax. We, you know, everybody went into, to last year's budget and took a major haircut on their sales tax forecast because of COVID and, and.
Except us.
No, we did. We, we, we took a major cut.
Yeah, but for.
Our actual numbers are a lot better.
Yeah, for budget purposes, y'all, y'all cut your budget. But like you all, we've seen a lot of folks who have, who have had record years on sales tax. Um, uh, and I think a lot of that is, is, has been a big surprise and, and a positive surprise. Uh, but, so a lot of conversations around how do we digest that? And how do we plan for that? Is it a one-time blip? Or is this something that we can expect to see these sales tax staying at?
Okay. Um, you're being patient with me, I appreciate it. The one other area that I'm concerned about, and maybe Dr. Crumpton can talk to this issue, is looking ahead to what we might potentially need in terms of debt service in the future. And I know that's a little crystal ball, but, um, how do you crank that in? Are you concerned that we may come up with a project that needs additional money, whatever? Is that something we need to incorporate in this decision-making process?
Well, I, I think there's always some types of risk, whether it's political or market-driven.
Well, I think there's always some types of risk, whether it's political or market-driven or whether something comes up and we need to fund it. That's why we've kept, we've pushed for higher reserves and fund balance and we pushing, you know, the reserves for capital reserve as well. That's why I also like the, the increasing our allocation of the tax rate from 7.61 to 8.61. Because then you're building more reserve capacity quicker. And if we had to get back, let's just say, you know, because right now, we're talking with Commissioner Laballe just a little while ago about ADM and the lack of ADM growth in the public schools. Well, what if, you know, the, the, the population takes off and, and all of a sudden we're back in the, in the discussions where we need an elementary school? So yeah, there's, there are those risks and you change your priorities as you go forward. And I think that's our all boards, you know, boards, all boards have to do that. You can't eliminate all risk in the decisions you make.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yes, sir. I, I might just add to that, as you get your magnifying glass out and look at these. I think one of the things that you'll also note in, in the majority of these cases particularly, like Dr. Crumpton said, page 33, which is, which is repurposing another penny, starting in, starting in fiscal year 2026, you have nice capacity to fund additional projects. So, through these, through this $51 million that y'all are considering right now, this is gonna take up your capacity through fiscal year '25 for debt service. But starting in '26, you have additional capacity after that
Being restored.
For future projects, yes, sir.
Okay. And, and that was which scenario would that be? I'm sorry.
What, it's, in most of the scenarios, it's a similar situation, but I was talking off of page 33, case 3B.
3B, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Connect, any questions?
No, good presentation, thank you.
Commissioner Laballe? Commissioner Sharp?
Great presentation, I have a, a, a way better understanding of, since you went through that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I can't say enough, thank you.
So, thank you, Mitch. So, at this time, we would like for y'all to entertain a timeline to move ahead with these projects, rather, and basically, I guess it comes down to which case you would want to consider, understanding that the concept with case 3B is repurposing a penny. We are fully aware that the board would like to see us lower the tax rates this year in the budget process. What case 3B would be doing would be taking a penny of what you potentially could lower the tax rate. Instead of lowering it, adding it to our debt service. By doing that, you can speed up the sports complex and possibly speed up when you can have additional debt capacity down the road because we would build our capital reserve back faster by going ahead and doing that. And that's what we've done. I know, we had, Coach Corver had a question about where the 7.61 came from. We have been doing plans like this since 2003. Every one of those plans that Davenport's done, for every debt service we've done, has had a tax impact and how much of our tax rate needed to go to debt service. Over the years of downturns and upturns, that got moved around and we didn't necessarily fund our capital plan the way we had intended. For the last four to five years, I would say, we have stuck to the plan of what the tax rate should be going to debt service would be going. So it's a calculation I go through every year when we do the budget. And then at the end of the year, I do it based on the actual numbers and what's left over goes to the reserve. So we've been funding that with the board's okay in adoption of the financing plans that we've looked at. So just so you understand that, that that's where that came from. So, at this time, we could be interested to hear what the board, how the board would like us to move forward.
I know you discussed with us at the airport regarding the one cent put to debt service. I do have a question. What do you recommend?
You weren't supposed to ask me that. I, I would be honest with you, I would recommend allocating one cent tax over to debt service. As a Lee County taxpayer, I personally, the impact is of a one, to one cent or two cent tax incre- decrease is not a huge impact on my day-to-day operations for my personal budget. So, I would rather see that one penny go to debt and allow us to be able to do some projects for Lee County that are not necessarily always school-related. We have, we have put a lot of debt to our schools and to our community college, which this debt would also involve the community college, I understand that. But we've put Lee County on the back burner for many years since I've been here. And I'm speaking to you honestly. And I would like to see us be able to move forward with some of the projects that would benefit, you know, all citizens of Lee County in some shake manner or form by either the library, the multi-sports complex, and the additional library and buildings for a community college.
Do I hear the motion to consider one of the cases?
Some of these numbers are obviously gonna change because we have expansions coming on.
Right, then, thank you for bringing that up, I meant to.
Projects with CCC in terms of how we were ramping our projects, that can save a lot of money. So, that could save us that one cent too.
You're right, and, you know, one thing I'll point out is, you know, our, you're gonna see it here in a few minutes when we get to the financial report. Our sales tax this year is growing at 14 and 15%. Yes, we cut back very conservatively. That little bit of 116, 116,000, I don't think you'll ever come up short because we'll have more sales tax. But we had to find a rate to grow. We know sooner or later that sales tax is on a cooldown, but we also know there's a lot of development coming, industry-wise and residential, that'll be pushing our sales tax for the next few years. So we tried to be more aggressive than what we've been in the past with our sales tax numbers, but try to be conservative enough that if the economy does turn, that we're good. So you're right, we may not need the full penny when the time comes. But I would recommend that to fund this, we would have to start it in this coming fiscal year budget to be able to meet the scenario that we've put in front of you in case 3B. Now, could you modify it later on down the road, once we can see the numbers? Yes, you may be able to cut back to a half a penny or, or less. If that made sense.
Mr. Chairman, I think instead of getting a motion on the, the adding the one cent, I think we're just at a point now where we need to start doing the planning for the library and the community college. And, you know, we're, we're kinda looking for the go-ahead to start, you know, meeting with the community college and, and talking about their plans and then meeting with the library board of trustees and the library staff and getting that planning going. It takes, you know, eight to 10 months to get the plans together before we can even go out to bid. So at some point, we have to give the go and, you know, use our fund balance to pay for the architectural fees for the projects and get RFQs out on the street and get designers in here. So, the board may not feel comfortable doing that just tonight. I, I wanna throw that out there because that's, in my opinion, that's really the next step in, in getting the projects going is, you know, really for the library and the community college more than the sports complex. We have a, we have some time issue and while interest rates are low, it'd be nice to, you know, get those moving forward.
Well, I'd like to thank you for your, your, your recommendation. I think that we're in the, the position we are right now because of the sacrifices the Lee County staff made and the, you all having the opportunity to make your recommendations to the board without interference on the front end. I think that's very important in how we get where we are, or how we got where we are. Allowing folks to do their job that we pay them for. And if we don't agree, that's entirely different, but allow folks to do the job.
Any other comments?
I was wondering if any of our, the commissioners have a, a sense of the appetite for our constituents with respect to delaying on the, on some of these projects as opposed to doing them right away? Do you have a sense or a feel for where we are as a community in, in terms of getting to this as soon as possible? Or will they feel comfortable with delaying and doing the kind of thing that Dr. Crumpton is possibly looking at where we, we look at the, the $12 million and the $14 million right now?
To answer that, I can tell you this from having that conference with the co-chair and myself, with the advocates for the sports complex, they want it now. They, and they didn't like the layout of the timeline and all the steps we have to go through to get there. So I'm just letting you know, yes, we've gotten that. If you've not heard from anyone, then be aware.
And I think if you heard from the library board of trustees, they would tell you that they've had a CIP plan in for 15 years plus and, you know, they would like to see their turn at the table as well, so. But the board, and I, and this was a prior board decision, they put the, the library and the community college project ahead of the multi-sports complex. That's why staff has come with the, you know, next year for the library and then two years after that with the multi-sports complex. So, that's why that scenario is in here, because that was, you know, prior board.
And that's what case...
One of the community college and library to be the priority. So...
Which case was that?
Case one is going ahead with the library and the CCC projects in '22 and delaying the multi-sports complex to 2024. That is case A, or case one.
In light of what Dr. Crumpton said, I, it seems if we go ahead kind of thinking case one to find out exactly what it's gonna look like over the next couple of months and trying to formulate the, the approach et cetera, can we not say that we're also keeping aware of, looking at things to see whether or not we could go ahead and accelerate it at a later date, move to a different case? But kinda move in the direction of case one now and continue to talk about the possibility in the future?
Yes, sir.
So we have an answer for the people that are aggressive. You say, look, we haven't forgotten, but we also have to do due diligence and make sure that we're finding out exactly what it's gonna cost and go from here. Does that make sense?
That works with any of these cases. So you can do, you can do case 3B and dial it back or continue forward. You can do it with any of these cases. Just if you're comfortable going forward, correct?
We're gonna move ahead based on getting started on the library and the CCC projects. Thank you.
So do we have a motion to adopt one of the cases? Or do you wanna have the option to move on one? Don't need a motion?
I think as we go through the budget process, you're gonna wanna kinda take it all together.
Okay.
You know, you're gonna have lots of requests from other folks, we've already heard from them, so. I think, I think, I think we just, you know, tonight was to get us started and, and have the discussions and then we'll figure out where we're headed.
We seem to be stalled, I just said, let's do something.
No, I think, I think we said we just, with the library and we can always make changes next meeting.
Well, let's go.
Is that a motion for case one?
It is.
Motion for case one to move ahead and direct staff? Any other discussion?
Robert made a motion to start with case one.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have your orders. Next item on the agenda is the Cape Fear Fire Department Clearwater Forest Fire Protection Service District. And I believe Mr. Shane is here, sir? How are you, Mr. Seagroves?
So before you tonight, you have two documents. Document one is a resolution adopting the proposed fire service district maps. And then you have document two, which is the agreement with Cape Fear Fire Department to provide protection in the Clearwater Forest area. I'll give you a little bit of background before we go any further with those two documents. If we back up to 2013, the board commissioners created and adopted the fire service districts. There are seven districts across Lee County. And in doing so, it still left a hole that was unprotected in Clearwater Forest. The only option at that time was to either one, build a fire station and another station in the county or contract with the city of Sanford. The board opted to contract with the city of Sanford and have done so since 2013. The current tax rate now for that in Clearwater Forest is 12.7 cent, excuse me, 18.7 cent. And so the proposal we have tonight was to go with Cape Fear, which would lower that tax rate down and actually save 6.6 cent on the hundred. Some of the things have changed, the reason we couldn't do it at the time with Cape Fear, when Commissioner Causey came in, they changed the way we respond, what, what they would allow us to do across the state of North Carolina. With that being said, they allowed us to use automatic mutual aid from two adjoining departments that were able to come together. Cape Fear would be the primary response, Carolina Trace and Northview would be the secondary response. So any structure call that, that happens inside the Clearwater Forest Service District, you would get the entire department from Cape Fear and guaranteed one engine from Northview and then one engine from Carolina Trace. The good thing about that, in an event of a bad situation, a fire, some type of large structure call there, you're getting all three fire departments, all the equipment that comes from those. And we're very proud of our departments in the county, they provide a great level of service. We've got 38 pieces of equipment stationed around Lee County and they're all ready to go. And so this will be a, a cost savings to the people in the district. And the other, you know, if we go back to 2013, there was no fire protection classification for Clearwater Forest because it was outside the six-mile district. And so homeowners were getting notices that their homeowner's insurance was being canceled because of the fire protection. So the city actually helped us a lot with that. Now, we'll be able to do that with Cape Fear Fire Department and the two departments that will respond with them. The city's current tax rate is three cent, excuse me, ISO rating of three, and Cape Fear's is a four. But if you remember, I know Chairman Smith knows this from the fire advisory board, anything five or below is a five, no matter what. So that could be a class one ISO department for residential properties, it would still be a class five. So, you know, good savings for our citizens there and gets our fire departments into that area that's protected by the county. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have on that.
Any questions from Mr. Seagroves?
Move to approve.
Motion has been made to approve the updated fire, Lee County Fire District's map with noted changes to the Clearwater Fire District. Any further discussion?
When is this going to affect for...
July 1.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Seeing there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, y'all have a good evening.
Can we also have a motion to approve the agreement with Cape Fear and authorize the manager to let the city know that we will end terminate our agreement, leaving their services if...
Move to approve. Motion's been made to sign the contract with Cape Fear Fire Department as well as instruct the manager to advise the city that on 1 July, we will no longer need their services. All those in favor, any further discussion, excuse me? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving right along.
Good day, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Dr. Crumpton. After a review of six sealed proposals submitted, which were publicly open by our finance department on 23 March 2021, we request approval for bid 48360221 for Lee County Board of Elections renovations to be awarded to Marks Construction Company. This is a local company from Sanford, in the amount of $93,340 to complete labor and renovations as specified in the architectural and engineering designs provided by Sherman Engineering. Marks Construction meets all the requirements identified in our notice to bid. And this amount also includes alternate number one, which is a Kiwanis Family Park Shelter renovations in the amount of $26,818, which is included in general services budget. We had 10 companies attend our mandatory pre-bid meeting and six of them ultimately provided their proposals, all of them from North Carolina and obviously Marks Construction being from Sanford. Sir, do you have any questions at this time?
Any questions regarding the proposed?
Just glad we were able to use someone from Sanford and that it was the law.
Just glad we were able to use someone from Sanford and that it was the lowest bid.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve. Motion's been made to approve the Board of Elections renovations to be awarded to Marks Construction Company in the amount of ninety-three thousand three hundred and forty dollars to complete labor, to complete labor of renovations as specified in architectural engineering designs. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Airborne?
All the way. Next item on the agenda is the lay, the list of boards and commissions recruitment and our illustrious clerk.
I just wanted to take a moment to provide an update to the board as we are a couple of months away from the, um, appointment process for those June term expirations and we have a number of them along with current vacancies. Um, I've done something a little bit different this year. I've created, um, and you'll have it in your packet of materials, that's what this eight and a half by fourteen packet is, is a summary of all, um, Board of Commissioner appointments. And so you can see, you know, the white is your current appointments, the orange is your current vacancies, and the yellow is the upcoming term expirations in June. Um, as we move forward, um, I've already started, um, I've drafted the, um, the vacancy and expiry, term expiration summary to be published in the Herald along with our website. Our website has already been updated with that advertisement and it'll also be published to social media. Um, I've also updated the, um, boards and commissions' application on our website. I've set a, um, due date of June fourth, which is the Friday before the first meeting in June. Um, you know, we'll continue to accept those applications on a rolling basis. This is just to try to encourage people to go ahead and get those applications in if they're interested, so I can go ahead and get them to you in a summary with a draft ballot at that first meeting in June, um, so we can prepare for that second meeting in June for the, the big appointment. Um, I'll keep this master list updated, so, you know, as we move forward, at any time you have any questions on our current vacancies, um, I can send this to you in an updated format. I've also included a few of the applications in your packet if you wish to hand distribute them, but I think the preferred method, um, would be to do it online. We have an online form that would automatically come to me and that would be the quickest way I could go ahead and get it to you. I have a number of applications that I've already received, I'm just waiting on the tax verification before I roll those over to you, and I'll continue doing that through email unless directed otherwise. If you have any questions, I'll go ahead and take them. Otherwise, this is just providing you information as we kind of go into this process and I'll probably be bombarding you with information up until that June meeting.
Thank you. Any questions of the clerk? You have your homework assignment, make sure you carry it out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion on budget, budget considerations and anticipation of reviewing the K through twelve budget requests for fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-two. Who wishes to pick up with that? Dr. Crumpton and Mr. Carver, Commissioner Carver?
I'll just mention the motivation behind it. Um, now, I, I've been in discussions with Dr. Crumpton about the information that he really feels is necessary to make a good choice on how much we should, uh, budget for the school system. And, um, the source of, the sources that we've asked for here give us that information. And, uh, it just kind of codifies it so that the, uh, the Board of Education and the superintendent have a target to shoot for. And it also, uh, makes a serious request for information that allows us to make that decision and, uh, makes the point that we really do want it. And it's a consensus of the board that we should ask for it this way. Dr. Crumpton, do you have any explanation?
This is public information anyways, right? This is public information, correct? That you're asking for, for anyways, right? Yes. Right? Okay. It would be public information. Um, yeah, Commissioner Carver and I were discussing the school's budget and their, the process that they had been going through up to this point. And, uh, um, you know, they concentrate very much so on the increases in local expenditures, um, and local funds. So, uh, keeping in line with the zero-based budgeting that, uh, we have been talking about this year and, and making everybody justify every dollar they get, not just the increase they're gonna get, um, we thought it was important to make sure that we get, uh, their entire budget request. And state statute does allow us to look at federal and state sources as well. Um, it's well documented in, in, uh, in the statutes and in case law that, you know, we can look at all that information and take it all together. And, uh, that's one of the reasons for the consolidated budget document. Um, and we have not received a, I'm looking at this mentor, but we have not received a consolidated budget. So this is the first year that we've never received one. Um, and we're assuming, um, that it's because the legislature did not pass a full budget. Um, they just passed the incremental budgets, but surely they have to work off of a budget and, uh, seeing what their consolidated budget looked like this year would be important. It would also show, um, you know, anything that they've been using for the ESER funds and, um, you know, the impacts that has had. So, um, I think it's appropriate that, you know, given, you know, the fact that the school board in recent years has been delivering the budget to us on the deadline date and we're hoping to pass our budget within thirty to forty-five days after, um, they give us their budget, that we should let them know in advance what we're gonna be expect, expecting, um, from a documentation standpoint, instead of waiting to get their budget request and then asking for it and being under the gun. So, um, I think it's appropriate to go ahead and ask for it now so that when they deliver the budget to us, they can deliver this information as well.
Do you need a motion on this one?
The school board does have a policy that, uh, they like our board to act on request to their board. So I think some of us remember that from, uh, some days where we've asked for things individually and they've asked for the board to make a motion to ask for it.
Motion has been made by Dr. Connect to consider directing the county manager to inform superintendent of schools that review of a, the budget request requires that he submit, following along with the K through twelve fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget request to be reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners. One, year-to-date financial statements showing all sources of funds and spending by line item, including expenditure of COVID emergency funds. Two, projected fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget with all sources of funds and expected expenditures by purpose, function, and line item. Three, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one consolidated budget document. And four, a projected budget for expenditures of ESER two funds until they expire in twenty-twenty-three. Any further discussion?
Let me get this clear. They haven't been put on notice because they wanted the board to act and make a formal request or what?
No, sir. They, we didn't, I mean, I would, my explanation is that this is information that Mr. Carver and I discussed that, you know, we wanted to review, we're asking the board to ask the Board of Education.
That's what I mean. We, we haven't asked already.
No, sir.
They wanted the formal step to make the request.
That's correct.
All right. That makes sense to me.
And, um, Dr. Crumpton, you support these requests?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Discussion? Motion's been made, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the manager's report. Ms. Mentor, again, thank you. By the way, that was a great presentation, very informative, and I can't say enough.
Thank you. I know it was a little long, but we felt like it had been a while since they had been and we had some new board members, so we thought it was a timely discussion with the projects you had ahead of you. And I will point out, we will also be bringing the CIP or the Capital Improvements Program to you either the next, um, board meeting or the first meeting in May, um, so that you can also see what other projects are out there and see what priorities, you know, have been placed there, so you'll know what's might be coming down the pike in the future. Um, before you, you have the financial report for the month of February. Um, you will see that we are just slightly behind on tax collections compared to the same period last year. I mean, it's point two percent, um, nothing that I'm highly concerned about at this point. As far as expenditures go, our target's sixty-six point six seven at this point. And, um, I will point out, if you look at your numbers here, you'll see there's several departments still over because we include encumbrances on this report. If I back out the encumbrances, we have, um, just a few departments over strategic services, elections, and IT. Strategic Services over due to maintenance contracts, elections is over due to the, um, November general election. IT is over due to annual maintenance contracts and the costs associated with their move to Douglas Drive. So again, those will balance out as we move ahead to the rest of the year. Um, you will also see our sales tax numbers starting on page one seventy-two of your agenda package. You'll see where we are compared to budget and because we did, um, cut our sales tax revenues in this year's budget, we are well ahead of our budget targets at this point. Um, in addition, on page one seventy-three and one seventy-four, you see where we are for our sales tax numbers, we're still seeing a growth of about sixteen percent. Um, we did get January numbers today, as typical, January drops off from December, but we're still well ahead and those numbers I'll have to you on your next month's schedule. So, but, um, we're still in the upward fourteen to fifteen percent growth area on sales tax. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Mrs. Mentor? Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Commissioner comments. Starting with, uh, Commissioner Carver.
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Hope everybody had a bless and happy Easter. You have this broadband, is this, did you put this in here? Broadband, expand world broadband access.
I don't think I did.
I, I requested that be passed out. It was an article that was, I ran across.
Okay. Thank you. Just checking.
Commissioner Lovell?
Yes, the Lee County Partnership for Children and Families met in March. They have merged with, um, the Coalition for Families. They're now one entity, so they've taken on a lot more responsibility, but, um, they have a really, really dedicated staff and through all the shutdowns and everything, they've still been maintaining all their programs. Um, they've been doing most of them online, but they're starting to incorporate some face-to-face. But, um, just wanted to report that they're doing well with their merge. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have anything tonight.
Commissioner Reeves, by the way, thank you for proposing the resolution that we presented to chief.
Yeah, I wanted to thank the board for the unanimous vote on that resolution, but more importantly, I intended to thank the chief's family for their support, allowing him to stay in that position for all these years. You, he's not the chief when he go home, I'm sure, but he might be the acting chief, but anyway, I just wanted to thank his family for their support over the years.
Commissioner Lovett?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
Did you get enough information today?
Brain is full.
I, I don't have any, uh, other than I got notified today that the young commissioners' program for Lee County will be starting in June. Uh, they're going to kick off on the seventh and run till the seventeenth. They would like to sit down with the commissioners on the ninth, probably here. Uh, that's in the, it's in the planning stage, so just giving you a heads up if you can make arrangements to be available to sit down with these young people on the ninth of June, that will be coming up. Trust everyone and glad to see everyone came safely. If you've traveled over the Easter holiday, uh, glad to see you back safely. So I have nothing further.
So with that, I move that we go into closed session per NCC General Statute one four three dash three eighteen eleven A five to discuss the acquisition of real property.
We are about to go into closed session, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.[1474.86]
Thank you.
Dedicated my project for the honeydew. Hopefully the weather doesn't interfere with it. We're up and ready. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are so adjourned. Thank you.